Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hutchings?
Present.
Ruffridge?
Here.
Hugarte?
Here.
Carey?
Present.
Chilson has an excused absence. Parker, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to item two on the agenda, approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would move to amend the agenda to add a Lay Down Resolution 2021-013, authorizing the acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Sounds like a seal. ARPA funds awarded to non-entitlement units of local government from the State of Alaska Department of Commerce, Community and Economic Development to the Consent Agenda as Agenda Item 8B3.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Are there any other changes to the Consent Agenda or the Agenda? Seeing none, will the Clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
Approval of the June 29, 2021 City Council Meeting Minutes. New Business Resolutions, Resolution 202130, authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with G.V. Jones &amp; Associates, Inc. in the amount of $41,247 for professional design services on water treatment plant bio-solid dewatering design project brought by the City Manager. Resolution 202131, authorizing the acceptance of America Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds awarded to non-entitlement units of local government from the State of Alaska Department of Commerce, Community and Economic Development, brought to you by the City Manager. And new business other action memorandum 2021009, resuming pre-COVID meeting procedures and discontinuing video conferencing, introduced by the Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? I need the items just read by the Clerk. For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Do we have any hands raised?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. And I see no one here in the chambers wishing to speak. So, having no one wishing to speak, the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Hearing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved. At this time, I will present the Saldana Business Appreciation Days proclamation to Ms. Shannon Davis, the Executive Director of the Saldana Chamber of Commerce.
Whereas the city of Saldana, March 19, 2020 issued a disaster emergency declaration in response to COVID-19 pandemic, the city council same day extended the declaration. Whereas the disaster emergency declaration remained in effect from June 1, 2021. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic had a serious effect on the business operations of many Saldana business owners and employees, and whereas these Saldana businesses worked diligently and hard to keep the businesses open and their employees being fully employed during the pandemic, to serve the needs of the residents of Saldana and its surrounding areas. And whereas the Saldana Chamber of Commerce worked hand-in-hand with our membership and the City of Saldana to encourage people to shop local. And whereas the City of Saldana and the residents wish to thank all the businesses for all they have done to maintain operations and serve their customers efficiently and safely as possible during this difficult time. Therefore, I call Jay Whitney, Mayor of the City of Saldana, to hereby proclaim July 18 to July 25, 2021, a Saldana Business Appreciation Day. And the Saldana, and the City of Saldana, and urge everyone to thank, patronize, and show appreciation to all the local businesses and their employees for all they have done to provide prosper, provide for prospering in the pandemic.
Thank you so much. I cannot wait to share it.
Thank you. I can't wait to share it with all of our business members in Saldana, that they will be going out immediately and they will be thrilled and humbled to have some of this.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving along to the next item on the agenda, which is number four, Public Comments and Presentations. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand. And if you would like to comment, app users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Seeing no one in the chambers wishing to speak on public comments, do we have any raised hands?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state and attendants who would like to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Seeing no one here in the chambers, do we have any raised hands?
No, there are no hands raised.
Thank you. We'll move on to item six, Administrative Reports. First one be updated CARES Act spending report and closeout plan, and a report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and thank you, council, for your patience. This item did not make the packet because as we were compiling this list of expenditures related to the CARES Act grant, I found myself wanting to put together a more comprehensive report that I felt did justice to the amount of effort and the good outcomes as a result of the council's grant funding decisions over the past year. So, we started preparing this as a more thorough document that really highlighted the different programs and some of the specific outcomes. And of course, as sometimes is the case, our ambition exceeded our timing to get that to you. So, what you have in front of you is the current expenditure summary of all CARES Act programs in one place. And we do, we are committed to still doing that closeout grant report. And that'll be, I think, a great tool to communicate with our partners, our elected officials who supported us with those grant funds, and the community in general. We'll work on getting that put together. But really, I wanted to come to you with an update of where we're at. We are, we are very nearly at the end of the CARES Act funding and specifically in executing the projects that we've identified over the last, really, 12 months or so. True to the spending plan, the council really prioritized a focus on, on business support and direct benefits to nonprofits and residents. And you can see that both in the summary on the memo, as well as in the spreadsheet on the back page, more than $4.5 million went out as, as grants to businesses. That was through the two separate rounds of business grants we did in 2020, the Shop Local program, the programs that John put together, whether it was the Virtual Storefront Improvement website program, the outdoor dining, destination marketing. So, a lot of our focus was on economic recovery and supporting small businesses. The next category was the various nonprofit grants and partnerships. And again, we did two separate round of grants for nonprofits, one that we administered last year, and a more recent round that was administered through the Alaska Community Foundation, focusing on specific areas of need. But in addition to that, we had a handful of one-off subrecipient agreements with different local organizations, from the college, the hospital, the food bank, Peninsula Community Health Services, et cetera, where, where there were specific needs identified that the city had awarded specific grants for those projects. That totaled $2.3 million, roughly 23% of all the city's funding. Next is a category that was reimbursement to the city for our own, some of our own expenses. We had some payroll expenses. The bulk of that was public safety, our, our police officers. The grant allowed a portion of their time to be reimbursed, recognizing that they were kind of on the front lines, especially early in the pandemic, as well as assisting it, you know, small number of our employees assisted at vaccine events. Early on, we had several of us where a large portion of our time was devoted to essentially an emergency operations center where we were coming together multiple times a week, talking about facilities, talking about policies. Those type of personnel expenses were eligible to be billed to the grant. We, we broke out, you know, some of the marketing communications. Almost $30,000 was spent in radio ads, social media ads, posters, flyers, trying to get direct mailers. We did a lot of direct mailers this last year, letting folks know about the different programs and opportunities to apply. As well as, you know, legal fees. We had a fair amount of legal fees. If you can imagine, as these new grant, the legislation was provided to us, there was a lot of conversations with our attorneys to ensure that we had compliance with both the state and federal requirements. They reviewed and assisted us in setting up the new grant programs that we put together for the community, as well as advised on just general policies. I think I shared at one point the Personnel Policy Book that we had developed internally that had telework agreements and return to work after illness. And, you know, really, we were, we spent quite a bit of time and our attorneys really took a heavy lift assisting us through navigating some of the, the legal and regulatory decisions. That next category, the 10%, just over $1 million, was the different city projects and expenses at our facilities or related to our, our programs. So, that includes things we did at the park, whether it was getting the light towers for Ark Lake for winter skating when the sports center was closed, to the library, the new book lockers that recently got finalized. If you haven't been to the library, they're now wrapped with some, some beautiful graphics. Just all the different safety mitigation protocols we put in place over the last year. Those all fall in that city projects category. And it represents essentially 10% of the total grant funding that we had available. The smaller category was the Direct Resident Relief Program. That was housing relief, water sewer relief, and then the $1,500 checks that, that residents could apply to the city for, for really a broad variety of uses they could use those funds for. That come in, came in just over, almost $540,000 that went out through those three programs. So, to date, we are essentially near, near closing out of the CARES Act funding. These are estimates, and for some time, these numbers will change slightly. For example, today, Melanie called me to let me know that we had received money back from one of our grantees that they ended up not needing after all. That's something that's happened several times, where a grantee had an anticipated need and they ended up either finding funding through another source or not moving forward with that project. So, they returned those grant funds per our agreements. That happened today. So, there's going to be some small amount of, of back and forth, but I think really we're narrowing in on the end of, of this funding. You can see that we've got approximately $239,000 identified there on that bottom line of the spreadsheet that has not been identified for any particular project. At this point, my recommendation would be to allow us to bill that towards eligible payroll expenses. We had more than $2 million, almost $2.2 million of payroll expenses in this current fiscal year that could have been billed to the grant had we prioritized that. But instead, the council prioritized, I think correctly so, the different grant programs, getting those funds out to the community. But we do have quite a bit of eligible payroll expenses that we would be able to close, essentially close out the remaining funds of the grant by applying them to FY21 payroll. That's the, the $239,000 you see there at the bottom. And if, really, my, my purpose was to, I think, summarize, thank the council for your leadership and, and really provide more detail than you've seen before in terms of a comprehensive list of CARES Act projects, and then speak to you about my intent to close it out if there's council concurrence, if there's not concern about doing that. We also have on this agenda and the next item to talk about, you know, ARPA funding. So, right, right as I'm coming to you requesting to be able to close out these CARES Acts after 12 months, we are ready to engage in a new and slightly different grant program, although a much lower amount of funding. But also, the landscape, I think, is, is pretty different from when we started in terms of other programs that are available. So, specifically within the ARPA funds, there are a lot of programs targeted at restaurants, event venues, resident relief. A lot of the things that we were trying to create because we felt there was maybe a gap or a need early on has now, I think, been satisfied through other funding available sources. So, for that reason, I would be comfortable recommending that we could close out the CARES Act funding if the council concurred. With that, I think that that concludes my report. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions, Mayor, if there are questions.
Any councils from, any questions from the council to the City Manager? Seeing none, thank you for your report. Well, go ahead, Vice Mayor Parker.
So, I'm, thank you for the detailed report in identifying the, the different projects and the number of applicants in each of them. And I recall when we were first doing the Direct Resident Relief, we had allocated substantially more money, but people didn't respond as we thought would, they would. So, we reallocated the funds. But the 75% of the monies have gone to the nonprofits, businesses, and residents here in the town, I think, is an outstanding, an outstanding reflection of our community. And that we wanted this money to go and be put back into the community and to help provide relief to, to businesses and individuals. So, you guys did a great job. Thanks.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to item B is American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, update and discussion. And it sounds, ARPA sounds like a senior citizen discount type thing, but report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I had included this as a topic on your agenda just because I wanted the council to know that we were following along with, in the process. However, last Wednesday, we didn't yet have information about when the state would open up their, their process or make those funds available. We actually got that email on Thursday, about two hours after the council packet printed. So, we do have the laydown resolution that was, I believe, approved in the consent agenda today. Thank you for that. That's going to allow us now to enter into the grant agreement paperwork with the state. And that was important because it's a pretty quick timeline. The legislation required the State of Alaska to turn the funds around to local municipalities within 30 days. And that quick action with the laydown resolution being approved is going to allow me to enter into that grant agreement paperwork when it's available to us, which I, the, the email that we received on Thursday indicated that that would be coming fairly soon. We've still included an estimated dollar amount. This $1,139,000 is an estimate, but it's, it's consistent with, it's consistent with the state, the state's estimate at this point and what AML and other entities have projected for the city. It would come in two tranches with one available soon, effective after that grant paperwork is finalized. The second one would be available approximately a year later. And the, the deadline for using these funds is much longer. So, it's, I think it's through 2023 or actually 2024, December. Eligible uses are similar to the CARES Act funding, but a little bit broader in that the state had worked out a formula where we can calculate a presumed amount of lost revenue based on the floor, the formula they put together. And really, if, if a municipality had experienced loss of revenue, we could attribute that to COVID per their formula and use those funds on any governmental expenses that we would deem normal in the course of business. So, we have not begun to bring forward recommendations to the council, but we would do that when the funds are available and with an appropriate ordinance and give the council an opportunity to advise us on priorities and where to focus those ARPA funds, knowing that we will have the ability to use them much broad, much more broadly than the CARES Act funds. And for example, I know what the municipality of Anchorage, when I was first looking at their spending plan for ARPA funds, it included things like Spruce Park Beetle mitigation. It included items addressing homelessness. That's because, like us, they had a portion of that funding that could be used broadly. So, we will have that same opportunity. And really included this in the packet, just to let you know it was on our radar. Now that we've, we've actually gotten the correspondence from the state, I anticipate that we'll be able to come back and have that follow-up conversation in the next month with the council. And that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on, obviously, that was an estimate for a dollar amount in there. Was this similar to CARES funds then in that each entity or municipality across the country would receive a dedicated dollar amount? Or how I was understanding ARPA from some of the things I'd read previously, there would be individual grants specifically designed for application, such as economic development or addressing mental health disorders? Are we able to apply for grants in addition to these funds? Or, I, I guess I was just a little confused on the ARPA structure, maybe?
Thank you, Councilman Ruffridge, through the Mayor. So, it's, it's both. So, there is a formula that is allocated to municipalities. Some municipalities, including larger cities like Fairbanks and Anchorage, and boroughs, received their funding directly from the federal government. We are what is considered a non-entitlement municipality. Ours comes through the state, but it is according to a set formula where, similar to CARES, we are eligible for those funds to use them for any eligible expenses and that number is predetermined. I believe it's based on population or a per capita formula. In addition, ARPA funded a whole range of other grant programs. And we included a link in the memo. AlaskaARPA.org is a great resource that I believe AML and some other entities have put together that really provide Treasury guidance documents and FAQs, as well as highlighting some of those other grant programs. And so, they've got a good website you can go to and look at those other grant programs that were funded under ARPA, separate from the municipal funding, and with, I believe, information about which ones are currently open and available and which ones are not yet maybe up and running, but will be coming online soon. And so, this is kind of what I was referring to when I was describing maybe this landscape of resources that exists now that maybe hadn't under CARES, particularly at the beginning. And a lot of the ones on the ARPA website that were funded through this legislation hit on several of the key issues that we had continued to hear being areas of need in our community, whether it's housing homelessness, mental health support, childcare support, tourism-oriented businesses. So, there are a lot of those programs. And by looking at those individual grant programs, it may be that the city could be eligible, but I think predominantly those are going to be programs that are available for businesses or area nonprofits to apply for directly themselves.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I do have one question, I guess. With what's going on down in Juneau with the budget and discussions that are going on with that, is that going to have any effect on the timeline for our receiving those funds or this resolution that we just passed?
Good question, Mayor Whitney. And I don't know the answer, but I will, I will follow up and find out whether a potential delay in adopting the, the operating budget or a potential veto would impact our ability or, or if we would still continue on the same timeline. I'd be happy to find out and email that answer to the council.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is number seven, Public Hearings. And we have none this evening. Moving on to number eight, New Business. No new ordinances for introduction. Item B is Resolutions, and that would be Resolution 2021-029, adopting Joint Resolution 2021-001 of the Assembly of the Kenai Peninsula Borough and Councils of the Cities of Homer, Kenai, Saldovia, Seward, and Saldana for the purpose of intergovernmental administration of borough and city elections, introduced by the City Clerk. May I have a motion to adopt? Ms. Hutchings?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-029, adopting Joint Resolution 2021.001 of the Assembly of the Kenai Peninsula Borough and Councils of the Cities of Homer, Kenai, Saldovia, Seward, and Saldana for the purpose of intergovernmental administration of borough and city elections.
You have a second? Vice Mayor Parker, thank you. Report from the City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Joint Resolution 2021 would authorize the City Manager to sign a memorandum of agreement with the borough. This memorandum of agreement simply formalizes processes that have been in place for as long as I've been participating in elections locally. Prior to 2021, both the borough and the city had access to the State of Alaska's election equipment and at no cost. So, the difference with this is it is actually formalizing a cost for the services that the borough is providing, based on the fact that the borough just incurred a substantial cost to acquire new equipment and software to program our elections.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Seeing no one here in the chambers that wishing to testify, do we have any raised hands?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Having no one who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yes.
Hugarte?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Parker? Hutchings?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
The Resolution 2021-029 passes on a 5-0 vote. Moving on to item number nine, Mayor and Council Reports. I have a couple of things here. Next, well, coming up is Progress Days in July. And one of the things that the City Council has done over the years is we've actually had a picnic barbecue and we did hot dogs and, and things like that. This year, of course, we won't be doing that, but we will be running a booth and having some prizes for the young adults or for the kids. And being that something that the City Council is doing, I would certainly hope some of you will be able to attend and volunteer your time to man that booth. I plan on being there, if not all day, most of the day anyway, but probably most, probably all day. So, something to keep on your calendars and looking forward to some volunteers. It's the, and I, next meeting, we'll be going back to regular meeting seating with an audience. And everyone will be back sitting up here like we had in a year ago. We'll be next to each other and we won't be able to, or we won't be shouting across the room to, to hear each other. One of the, the best parts of this is I will have, be, I will be able to end the Zoom comments for those participating. I won't have to say that again, I hope. And then, I would like to wish my twin grandkids happy birthday. Today is their birthday and they're having a little bit of a party. So, happy birthday, guys. All right, moving on to Council Reports and Boards and Commissions. Airport Commission meeting, Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. The Airport Commission met on June 17, then discussed a number of items. Probably the most significant being, should there be a decommissioning of the non-directional beacon at the airport? And this is something where the commission is looking at putting it out for public notice to seek public comment, get public input as to whether or not people want to see that decommissioned or not, according to Kyle. This is something that's rarely used. It's costly to maintain. It's something that the FAA pays for. It's not a direct cost to the city. But, you know, if it's something that particularly the aviators don't see a need to, to have, let's save the federal government some money. So, anyway, the Airport Commission will be going out for public notice and getting public comment, bringing it back before the commission at their next meeting. And there were a couple of other items. I think I got the highlights. I don't know, Kyle, if you have anything else to add? And happy birthday to your grandkids and we'll keep it short so you can go celebrate and have a party too.
Hopefully, they'll save me some cake and ice cream. Any questions for Vice Mayor Parker? Seeing none, we'll move on to Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District Board meeting. Mr. Zarneski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The board met last week. It was a very quick meeting. Couple of highlights are, number one, the Kenai Peninsula Borough Assembly passed a committing resolution for Capehead and the staff at Capehead for all the work that they did over the past year and the CARES grant and all the behind-the-scenes things that Tim and company worked on. So, it was great to see Tim and his staff get, get recognized. Also, Also, at the board meeting, it was reported that Tim was able to resolve a tax issue regarding the land itself and the building and the tenants with the borough. It was an issue that hadn't been an issue until last year. And working with the assessor, they were able to come to an agreement as to which, which tenants should be taxed, what portions of the building should be taxed, and so on. So that ended in a, in a positive way. And then finally, there was unanimous approval of the SEDS, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. So that was adopted, and Soldatna's riverfront project is one of the specific action items within that, within that document. So that will allow us to get our foot in the door for different grant programs. And that is all I've got for you.
There any questions for Mr. Zarneski? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. We'll move on to item 10, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I provided a written, a report in the packet this week on several of the items to give you an update on. I want to thank the council for the input and the questions during the work session, and we'll look forward to doing some additional research and bringing forward some options for the council to consider moving forward. I think that's going to be a, a great benefit to us and to the, the property owners in our area to have that policy in place. One of the items I mentioned in my report was the grant research Mr. Zarneski had worked with to provide some recommendations for funding sources we could suggest the community go after for coming up with a strategic plan addressing homelessness in the central peninsula area. And we did meet on Thursday with Kathy Gensel, Leslie Rohr, and Tim Navar to share that funding strategy and discuss ideas about maybe pursuing that strategic plan. We're going to have a follow up meeting this Thursday, tomorrow, to keep that conversation moving forward. But we provided essentially a draft of maybe a, a path forward in terms of bringing together some community members and organizations with commitments to pursue this strategic planning process and really get a better understanding of needs and opportunities to really address homelessness in our community. And so we'll keep you updated. As I mentioned, our next meeting's tomorrow, and I can let the council know the outcomes of that meeting. I did have a Remote Seller Sales Tax Commission Board meeting on the 22nd. We met as a board and really adopted various policy documents. We work closely with the staff there at AML as they administer the Remote Sales Tax Commission collecting within the state. And we approved several interpretations and, and policy processes really related to the, the technical administration of that program. We're going to meet again, potentially have an, an annual meeting of all members. I believe it'll be scheduled for the AML meeting in November, where member communities can come together for an annual meeting of that commission. And I'll keep, keep us updated on the schedule as that is known. Lastly, it was fun. We got to host some of our friends from the city of Seward today, the new city manager and their public works director, deputy manager, and a council member came up to Soldatna and had asked to tour some of our facilities. Kyle and Scotty showed them around our maintenance shop, the new Shred Building at the airport, and got to have lunch and, and really meet Jeanette Bauer, the manager, for the first time. So that was great, and look forward to continuing to, to partner with them and work with them. And that concludes my report.
There any questions for the city manager? Vice Mayor Parker?
I, I appreciate the, the grant funding strategy that was put together by the city and provided to the, to the homeless group. So having that, that path forward, I hope, is going to be helpful as we go forward. Thank you.
And speaking on the remote sales tax, I received an email from one online service that I use and saying that they were now going to collect sales tax in the state of Alaska because they had reached a certain plateau. So it is working, and all the communities that are part of that are at least getting some sales tax revenue now. Thank you. We'll move on to item 11, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Seeing no one here in the chambers, we'll say, for the, for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to put comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Do we have any hands raised?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There are no hands raised.
Thank you very much. We will move on to item number 12, council comments. And we will start with Ms. Hutchings.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the advertising program that we're using for the city of Soldatna and the Kenai Peninsula Borough seems to be working very well. I have friends from the Matsu, they're saying, we're coming down. I keep hearing all these ads. What have, what have you guys changed? And I said, we've always been great and wonderful. Now you can enjoy it. And I did want to say thank you for the outside dining program. It's going well at Don Jose's. We're really enjoying it, and it's just about finished. So that'll be great. And you're right, we are collecting on sales tax. Every time I have to go on Amazon, that is not something I can find locally, and it's not for business, I'm paying my fair share of sales tax. So thank you.
Mr. Hugh Garde?
Just like to say thank you, and thank you for giving me the chance to learn, experience all this. God bless you.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Just wanted to say, sort of in the same vein as Councilman Parker, thanks to all the hard work at the city administration level with CARES funds. Sort of still processing a lot of what happened over the last 18 months myself, and I imagine that people engaged at the city level are probably feeling the same way. It feels good to start to wrap up some of that stuff and an immense amount of effort and work that went into that. And I, I'd like to say I'm proud to have been a, a small part of that. I think that was a job well done. I was really happy to see the capital improvement stuff at the end of this list as well. Exciting projects coming up as always, and I think I always enjoy looking at what we're looking at for the future. So I'm excited to have that conversation later next month. And I also am excited about the, the grant proposals and the conversation that's going to be happening tomorrow. And I think this is a, a really good progress in a direction that we've been hearing for quite some time, in my duration on the council at least. And I'm proud of the city of Soldatna for helping facilitate that conversation and try to move that forward in some sort of way. And again, that's credit to our staff for putting in effort when really you probably don't have to. So that's doing things that are right for the sake of doing them because they're the right things to do, and I like that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't going to say anything, however, I feel I need to. I've been watching Mrs. Parker, and there have been bugs bugging her pretty badly. And, okay? And so I want to suggest to the city manager, whoever's appropriate, I don't care which department it is, that we need a bug zapper over there that would fry them. Now, I'm not doing this just for her sake. Knowing that, starting next time, I'm back to her left, I've got it, she's made a couple of moves like that, that'd be right on top of me. So I would not wish to see collateral damage to me as she's zapping bugs. So that's my comment. We need a bug zapper, and she should not have to do this. Thank you.
You got that on capital improvements?
We'll take care of it, sir. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
I, I look forward to having Councilmember Carey to my left and Ruffridge to my right, and we can just. I'll, I'll see you all in July.
Okay, moving along to item 13, executive sessions. We have no need for one tonight. And item 14 is meeting announcements. July 7th, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 5:30 PM. And July 14th, city council meeting at 6:00 PM. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned.